Been for Tuesday, for the city council meeting Tuesday, December twenty seven, twenty one. The war. Want to welcome Kai John W and any other media or guests and anybody who's invited, who's joined us as well. And we'll start with prayer to lower Lord's Saint.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Our kingdom come, that will be done. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. Let us not be tempted, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and
Thank you all. Again, we'll start with the roll call, Ms. Tany.
We will discuss this evening. Okay. Mr. Franklin is here, just had to step out for a moment. Etherly forward. We have five persons.
All right, we want to welcome John Wilson from our some league. He's the chief legal counsel for those listening and those home. We're really grateful, John, that you've driven all the way over here from Little Rock on during what most people consider the vacation holiday time to help us answer some questions regarding the American Rescue Act. So if if there's no objection at this time, I'm going to introduce John. And again, thank you and ask you to American Rescue Act. And for those again at home, this is the money that was sent to cities and counties across the country to help deal with infrastructure issues and premium pay for employees out of which we recently paid premium to our employees. John, you're what we recognize.
There's been a lot that has been said about it and a lot that is continuing to change about it. But I will say this, like the mayor mentioned, this is a federal grant stream that came from a while back and is to be used for purposes, infrastructure being one of them, premium pay being another one, and dealing with the negative economic and health impacts of COVID being two of the the final one is lost revenue. So I think gather from what has been discussed here, the really new big issues are going to be premium pay and lost revenue. I'll start with the lost revenue first. It's fundamentally important that the city understand how much revenue it lost during the pandemic, which I understand has been done. And we're certainly there to help confirm any of this that as it needs, we have a team of the league in North Little Rock to help confirm or make sure that you are comfortable with your lost revenue. There's lost revenue is important to be done first because law, the money that the federal, the feds have given you all for lost revenue can be used really for any any government purpose. You can't buy a trip to the Barbados, want to buy a fire truck. If you want to pave the road, if you want to, you know, do whatever it is, you can use loss revenue reimbursement for those, those things. Now, I will say this real quickly about the rest of the piece because it's such a broad topic or broad way to use the money. We would love as much discretion as possible from Congress to use the money for as many different reasons as we would like. And that's where the lost revenue comes into play. Congress has had, or Senate has passed, now it's the House, that they're looking to pass an amendment to the rescue plan that shorthand says everything is lost revenue, which means they're going to allow cities and towns and the states to use this money for any government purpose. And so once that happens, if it happens, which we've been told for six weeks or three months, it's going to happen. Really, the cities and towns and counties and state can use the money for whatever government purpose they want. So all these, all these other things, these limitations on infrastructure, limitations on premium pay really goes away. And I like to joke that sixty-five percent of our work over the last year was all for naught because the rules we taught everybody just don't matter anymore. So, but hopefully that's right. Hopefully Congress passes the amendment and we get to use the money however we deem fit. As for premium pay, it is a, an amount of money that's used to compensate. And this is a very shorthand way of saying it. It's used to compensate employees who were exposed during their time working. So it can't be someone that worked from home and has was engaged in some activities, some work that, like I said, put them at risk for COVID. Like, as the feds have said, taking things that, that other people have handled or dealing with people face to face. I think one of the big reason, big challenge, big problems I had with the CARES Act, which was the first round of federal fund, was that it compensated cities for re, for salary for first responders. I completely agree with that, police, fire, EMTs. It left out a lot, a lot of folks that I think were fundamentally important, namely sanitation workers, water folks and sewer folks. Because in my mind, to fight a pandemic, you have to have clean water going in, dirty water going out and trash off the streets. So thankfully, Congress saw the error in their ways and said, we can use this money to compensate, to give a little bit of an extra bonus for, for those workers that exposed themselves to COVID. Again, expose themselves to COVID is a very shorthand way of talking about this, but it's a pretty good framework, a pretty good guide. It is a, it is an up to thirteen dollars an hour bonus, which the feds don't want you to use the word bonus, but you know, it roses a rose by any other name. It is a bonus for hours worked when you, that employee is exposed to COVID. It can only be up to twenty-five thousand dollars per employee. And again, up thirteen dollars an hour. And again, it has to be for hours worked in person, not, not virtual. So what we've told cities when asked about this, and Ms. Turner and I have talked about this, Mr. Valley, Mr. Mayor, we've all talked about this. And what y'all have done is what we've recommended, you set an amount and then really leave it up to the mayor to be the one to determine who's eligible, who's not, based on the framework guidelines that y'all put into the ordinance. And then from there, the, that amount sort of, as we call it, you back into the math. So it's not really wise to just say thirteen dollars an hour. What you say is here's five thousand dollars, I think. And then you calculate, I work for the city of Helena, West Helena for a hundred hours. You know, or a thousand hours, that's five dollars extra an hour, but I only worked nine hundred, nine hundred dollars, nine hundred hours. So I don't have a five dollar an hour increase. I have a five twenty-five or whatever the math is. It's you back into the math, but under no circumstances can backing, back in, back ending into the math exceed thirteen dollars an hour, which I think the mayor is working on right now. So that seems all squared away, in my opinion, from what I know. But I'm certainly here to help y'all through anything else.
And then, and just let me add to that. So the city of Helena received one point one million in, I can't remember what month, month, month it was. I think April or May, and we're due to receive another one point one million this coming May. There is a bill pending before Congress that John just spoke to. I think most of our delegation supports it.
Yeah, three out of four sponsors of it, in fact.
Yeah. That would completely lift all restrictions except the need for government. That's the terminology, government services or government.
Yeah.
Which would make this infinitely easier to do. But it hasn't passed yet, so we're still operating under the earlier Rescue Act funds. A county, I think, received over three million. It's based on population. It was divvied out based on population. The uses, as I understood it, was originally, and it's evolved over time. The Treasury Department is responsible for issuing some of the regulations, rules on how we're supposed to spend this. I've gone to the Treasury Department website and read them, and they've evolved over time, as regulations often do, particularly with congressional input. Initially, it was water and sewer broadband. And y'all appropriated that money accordingly sometime in the summer. I can't, or no, in September. And then they started to make it more lenient for pandemic premium pay for employees as that became a much more popular item. The Arkansas County's Association had a meeting in the summer, annual meeting in Springdale or somewhere. And immediately went back and just wrote checks and really didn't just ignore the regulations that came out of Washington. And immediately, one of the auditors, let's, let's say, I was taught to, had to turn around and go back to Springdale to tell them, you can't do that. But inevitably, most of the counties followed suit. Our county did the same thing. By the time it got to us and it was brought up here, it was clear that we had to follow a much more strict guidelines that Mr. Wilson points out, because it will be federally audited. It has to be, and has been put in a separate account. And if we misappropriate or misspend any funds out of it, as with any federal funds, as we've known in the past, as we've had to deal with in recent years, we will be expected to pay that back. So it's important to me that we do it right. So I want to thank Mr. Wilson again and open it up for questions. Any questions, Mr. Wilson? So. Yes, ma'am. This is Crockett.
Well, you know, I was trying to find him on my way up here. Not necessarily. I, I think what, what I think the mayor is saying, what I, what I agree with is counties, some counties, and listen, I'm not saying they didn't go back and document it the right way. But the way it was reported in the press is they're giving a thousand dollar check or five thousand dollar check to every employee. Well, that's not how it works, you know? And now that's, now the press may have shorthanded it. So really, once the resolution was passed, which, you know, I get to another issue in a second. As long as the back ending of the math is going fine, then it's fine. I don't know of any reason that it wouldn't be fine because we, that's our draft. That's a model, a draft that we saw. Now, I did remember in that, and I don't have a copy in front of me, but there's a portion, there's another group of people, I guess, city council members, city officials, and maybe a couple of other folks that are also getting a not premium pay, but a bonus. Is that right? Now, remember that right in the resolution? I'm sorry?
It's in it, it wasn't a bonus. It was in the fact. It was in city things because we could use where a bonus.
Okay, yeah, but it wasn't from the premium pay, right? Okay, you're using it for either from, but you're using federal funds for that? Okay, the only, here's the only discussion we had internally about that is premium pay sets guidelines on what, on who gets the money, who doesn't get the money. So the argument is that, and I'm not saying what you, I'm not saying it's right, wrong or indifferent. What I'm saying is that the only thing that we thought of internally is that, well, if you're giving a premium pay by another name, but you're only doing it to not, not have, not have the same requirements of premium pay, it made, it made some people nervous in our office. Karen Curry sort of talked about this, and she's like, I don't know if that really, but at the end of the day, lost revenue is to be used for any government service and a, you know, incentive pay is a government service, I would argue. But it's not, it's one of those instances in which there's not a lot of clear guidance from Treasury on this. So that's the only reason we had any sort of like, oh, okay. So that's the only pause we had.
So would that be, so would that be the only pause? The, the cities that did it, there were no question about it. So with the, with the bonus or the city pay for those couple of people, you know, what, what direction is he to follow?
I don't know of any other city that's given incentive pay that wasn't premium pay. So some cities have talked about giving it to council members, and I'll tell you what I've advised them. I said, oh, sure, premium pay for council members? You know, I, I, I never thought that that would be an issue, but if, if you want to give premium pay to city council members, sure. Make sure they work the hours, make sure that they have, did all the prerequisites in the premium pay, you know, whatever. But I don't know of any city that's gone separately and used this money for just flat out incentive pay or bonuses for folks that were not otherwise entitled to premium pay. So I don't, I've never, I've never dealt with that before until now.
So we have a law school pending for, for the, these people who didn't receive the hopeful five thousand. So what do we, so what do we, how do we handle that now? See, it was five thousand dollars, he initially gave them four. So where do we go with that? I mean, so it would be sued, so which, which, which way do we go? Do we pay, since he didn't give the five, just get a four? So these employees were tied to the five. What happens from here? Do we see, do we go back and give them the other thousand or what do we do?
For the non-premium pay employees?
No, for the
Oh, I, I assume that was being calculated.
No.
I think the, if I may, I think the issue that Mr. Franklin is trying to articulate, the council set up to five thousand dollars. What was given to employees was four thousand. And Mr. Franklin, what he's, what he's asking us about, if they worked the hours according to the resolution, should they have been paid all the way up to the five thousand that the city council had appropriated at thirteen dollars an hour? Now, that may not be something that you want to answer at this point, but that's, that's the question that he
Okay, fair enough.
He bounced it off of me yesterday or the other day. And I told him I would defer to you on that because the legal be representing the city in the lawsuit and my brother suing, and I was trying not to, but I was trying to, for purposes of you knowing what exactly he's asking and making sure legally what he's asking you, I just wanted you to know that's what he's asking.
Well, you know, it's, it's tough to say because I, you know, the law is not really clear in all this, because this is, this is sort of uncharted territory. I mean, the last time we got, we being cities and towns, got direct federal funding was during the Lyndon Johnson administration. So it, it's been a long time. And I don't think that money had the amount of restrictions that this money has on it, or the lack of restrictions, because you don't know what's going to happen. It may be that it all just gets, you can use it for whatever. So I don't know the answer to that question. I, I can tell you from a risk management pers, perspective, if, if, if y'all decide to pay out that amount of money because the person, the people worked that amount of money, then obviously that, that's one of the claims that would, I would say, would essentially go away in that lawsuit. I know nothing about the overtime aspect, by the way, of the, of that, of that case.
So let me, let me add a couple of things. What, what we did is essentially, yeah, I'll be careful.
Yes, the one thing about it is this is one of those gray areas where John and I always cringe in council meeting. That we're talking about a lawsuit that's actually been filed against the city. And so I took some degree of caution and I said, I understand you all want to make your points for the public and et cetera. But part of the issue, my concern is, I don't want us to, to create a situation where we're exposing things outside. But with that caveat, may I go ahead?
Well, and, and, and I'll, I'll be careful, but it won't be anything I went inside court because it's just the truth. Which I know lawyers don't like to hear their clients say sometimes. You know, basically, we followed the municipal league advice when we back ended it. I'm trying to remember what the hour rate was, eleven. Based on the, what we knew we had available, based on other commitments, based on the lost revenue issue, which is still undetermined, or at least hadn't been, hadn't been reviewed by municipal yet, let me put it that way. And so that came to four thousand dollars for those employees on an hourly basis. So some of those employees, not very many, hadn't worked that entire period. I think February twenty twenty to October thirty first was the resolution. Some of the stipulations that I was told was if you work from home, you're not eligible. Well, all of our council meetings were Zoom meetings from home. Secondly, was the, the income limitations for our county, which I was advised by the league was set at the sixty thousand plus figure. And so based on those limitations and, you know, we, we devised, we made no distinctions otherwise, other than we considered all the employees who worked during that period essential for the purposes of their to, to the pandemic. And as I said, and some were hired since October thirty first, didn't get anything. Some were hired in the summer, and so that was prorated on an hourly basis. That's how it was calculated, and that's how it's been done. Mr. Crockett.
So I'm, my mind is trying to figure out how you determine, how did you determine that the four thousand dollars would, you know, we voted on one name and you paid something else?
Well, it's my understanding the council appropriated up to five thousand dollars. And in the Arkansas Constitution, there's balance of power that as the council appropriates, the mayor executes his executive branch. And in this federal act, as I understand it, according to both Treasury Department guidance and municipal, there are certain stipulations that we have to go by. When we risk, and we will be audited federally, we risk the exposure, having to repay it. And so we took the calculations recommended by the municipal league and paid as much as we felt that we could with the framework of those criteria. And that came to four thousand dollars for, that was a before tax. And also, of course, he had to take taxes and other things out of those checks. That's also part of the law. Plus, like I said, it's, it's based on an hourly prorated basis, going back to, I believe it's February twenty twenty, up to October thirty first, the resolution twenty one. So we used the formula of the municipal, we worked within the guidelines of what is available pending some determinations like lost revenue, other commitments that have been made. And we felt like to err on the side where we would not have to pay it back, that that rate was the, the rational rate. And that is the prerogative of the mayor and the executive branch, according to both federal law and the state constitution.
I, I think I made it. It says an amount not to exceed five thousand, but is set the rate at thirteen dollars an hour. I thought it was, I thought it was the other way around. I thought it was five thousand dollars up to a rate of thirteen dollars an hour. So it's a, it's about not to exceed five thousand dollars at thirteen dollars an hour. So three eighty-four, really, the, the number that gets sort of calculated based on your right?
So you're saying it has to be thirteen dollars an hour?
Well, based on what your ordinance says, yeah, it looks like it, or your resolution, the amount shall be determined based on eligible hours worked at the rate of thirteen dollars an hour, up to three hundred and eighty-four hours. So the way I read this, by the way, let's get down to brass tacks, right? The, the way I read this is the council has said that we're going to, we, we're going to pay up to five thousand dollars. That's what it says. But it's going to be on eligible work and the eligible hours is set forth in section one. So the mayor is the one that, the mayor or whoever he, his designate is the one that determines who, who qualifies for that and who doesn't, right? So you can't just say sanitation workers get it. You have to make sure that sanitation worker actually worked, right? And so you set the amount thirteen dollars an hour and it's up to that's what you're backing into. You have to back in and calculate based on all that. So, you know, my, which actually makes me feel better because I thought it was something different. But so Andre and I were both sanitation workers, right? You know, he works a hundred hours, I work seventy-five hours. He's going to get more than I am, right? So not everybody, presumably theoretically, not everybody's going to get five thousand dollars. That's just the way it's going to have to work. That's the reason this is more complicated than the counties. Again, the counties may have short, the press may have shorthanded it, maybe the county said five thousand dollars like y'all have done, who knows? But that's why this takes a little bit of time to go through, determine who gets what and how much.
And let me say for the record, I'm speculating what our hourly rate was, I can't really remember. But I do remember that we did it based on an hourly basis between that framework and based on the recommendations that we got from both the league and the Treasury Department. Yes, sir. Just say Columbia.
What we're saying is the fact that if an employee did not work the number of hours, it could not be compensated up to five thousand.
Not five thousand, no. If, if Andre worked three and two hours, he gets the entire five thousand. I don't.
He could, and he'd have to prove that, is that correct? Or the record after show that? Documented.
Miss, Miss Ford.
Treasury ran those numbers, and when he said in the meeting that everybody would not get to sign, and then he said at that total amount, it may be up to, so that's what I, I was looking at it. He gave us that information.
Well, I think the, the, this question is, does the mayor have to pay up to five thousand dollars because the council appropriated it?
Well, yeah, well, that's, that's the question, right? I mean, generally speaking, the answer is no. I mean, the, this, the council says we're, we're going to set aside a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a fire truck. The mayor says, well, I don't think I'm going to do it this year, I'm going to do it next year, right? But, you know, at the same time, there's an argument that, you know, Mr. Valley, not Andre, but Mr. Valley, the other Mr. Valley, James. I don't know if it's J F or James, I wasn't sure. All right. So James is saying, you know, the council appropriated, so, you know, it, the, everybody's entitled to it. Which is why just paying it obviously gets rid of that risk, but but I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. That's the reason we have lawsuits, I guess, to figure that out.
Any other questions? And I know we have, or I believe we have Karen Curry joining us by the same, I'm not exactly sure how.
She texted, she's texting.
And how we communicate with her, but I know she's paying attention. She's the, and for the audience, she is the grants program officer for the Arkansas Municipal League.
Mr. Wilson, prior to the meeting, you, the mayor, I, and Mr. Turner were having discussions about the revenue portion and the employees who worked over the hundred fifty percent or sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. For the public, could you explain what the council should do related to them to ensure that they receive premium pay?
Okay, so the, the sixty-seven, or whatever the number is. So what, what the feds have said is that everybody's entitled to premium pay. Flat out, everybody that worked the hours and did the, you know, the Lord's work during COVID and all that sort of stuff. But if you make over a certain amount of money, which is a hundred fifty percent of the state average wage or the, or the areas, whichever is higher, which this, the state, I guess the states would be higher, I don't know. The math comes out to about sixty-seven thousand dollars are what y'all are telling me. So if the thirteen dollars an hour bumped somebody up over that sixty-seven thousand dollar amount, they're still eligible for premium pay, but the city needs to, needs to explain why that person is entitled to that money. So the police chief, I'm sure, is a, is an example of this. Just say, you know, and there's not much guidance on this necessarily, but what I would recommend is if the, and I'm asking Karen if I'm wrong, by the way, Karen, just say, look, the, the police chief did, did good work like everybody else did. You know, he's entitled to the, to the premium pay too. We want to reward him for, you know, all his, you know, compensate him, I should say, compensate him for exposing himself to COVID day in, day out. And just sort of leave it like that. That would be my recommendation, and that way you cover your bases from that perspective as well.
Four or five individuals, Andre Valley, again, would the city council need to do something more, since they've made appropriation? Is the appropriation in that resolution sufficient?
Let's see, what's
What I'm saying is, is it a documentation question on behalf of the mayor? Or is it something that this body needs to
Oh, yeah, I see what you've done there. Yeah, so section five for the public, for city officials who are not covered by the premium pay portion of the Rescue Act, the council hereby appropriates a total of sixty-one thousand dollars to provide funds. Okay, so there's nothing more to do. You've already covered the police chief, I use him as an example, and he's a great police chief, by the way. I hope y'all know that, I'm sure you do, but I like him a lot. He, he's already sort of in section two, so section five is, doesn't apply to him. That, but section five is the issue that Karen and I discussed internally, about whether that's appropriate or not. I can't say that it's inappropriate, but I also can't say that it is appropriate either. It's, it's kind of a
For the sake of listening, what I was trying to ask Mr. Wilson was simply this. On section two, we, we're talking about the department heads that were over the hundred fifty percent and a couple of police officers that were over that amount. What I'm saying is in What I'm saying is in section, anything else or
You're covered.
Just as the mayor needs to document.
Yeah, the mayor or who's designate, you will need to document why the police chief or whoever it is, the department head is entitled to premium pay.
But I just wanted to declare it.
Yeah, sorry, I got paid by the word, so I keep talking, so.
The question is, because I know our guidelines that we first got was anybody that made over 67,500 in this county anyway, would not be eligible for premium pay because of the amount of their income. But you're saying that if, if mayor can document or designate, document that the people over that, making over 67,500 a year, somehow do deserve premium pay, then it's covered by that resolution.
Correct.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes, that's, that's clear.
Ms. Crockett.
If you think they made over this, or is this, just say my salary was $40,000. Shorten this and I did overtime, it cost me to go in to the 67.5 a little over there. Do you judge about the salary or do you judge about what they actually made?
I hope Karen will text me and answer that, because I don't know, I don't know. But I will say this, if, if you, if there's a question to talk about, you say, look, this employee may or may not be over the limit, we don't know. But even if she is, we're going to, we're going to explain why.
And, and Mr. Wilson, this, this would be my question. Well, actually I have two questions. One is, and I, I have, I have some experience with this and the city has had experience with this. The federal government has a tendency to change its mind and change the rules later, especially if there's some kind of scandal somewhere in the United States about how some mayor took his girlfriend to Hawaii or something. Suddenly the auditors become very conservative and err on the side of that. And if there is no guidance, but there is recommendations not to act until there is guidance, then it seems to me that to act conservatively would be wise so that you would not have to repay money in the case of an audit. There's one thing to, to have sort of manna from heaven, which is money that we didn't know we were going to get from the federal government that can help us with a lot of things that we desperately need in one of the poorest cities in the country. And then there's finding ourselves in a position where we have to pay it back because we made some decisions that were later ruled because there was no guidance. The guidance came out later, and this has been a moving target. Because I've watched the treasury department page where the guidance is published. And they add to it and change and amend. And that is the power of the federal government and the treasury department to do that based on other outside external events that come from Congress a lot of times, the president, other people, secretary headlines usually. And what concerns me is that we, in our earnestness to help people, and I understand that, that we'll get ourselves in a position where we'll actually have to pay money back. And so without guidance, I would feel more comfortable if we had guidance. Some documentation that says, for example, one of the recommendations that we got from the municipal league was that if someone was not eligible for pandemic premium pay, then they should not be paid out of these federal funds in any way, lost revenue or not, because guidance could come down later that says you shouldn't. Now, strictly speaking on a legal basis, right now, it doesn't say you can't. It also doesn't say you can. And so I'm more worried about what it doesn't say than what it does say, because I know what they can do. You said it's been LBJ's administration. I can tell you that, that I've seen experience with the state of Arkansas and other instances where the federal government, because they are the federal government and they can do this, changes its mind later, amends guidance, does come out with some guidance after the fact. And when they audit you, they don't care. Because those auditors don't, they don't get to make the decision. Their job is to audit. So I guess my point is where they're, where they are silent, where there is no guidance, my nature is to be conservative until there is guidance. And wonder and to wait until there is, and rather than get on a limb and worry about them taking it back, because the federal government has that kind of power. State doesn't, federal doesn't. Yeah, and, and the guidance that, that, and I handed that out, said clearly, anybody who's not eligible for premium pay should not be paid out of last revenue. But that's guidance, that's still guidance, that's not a legal opinion.
The email that you gave the city council, Ms. Crockett asked you about, what was the question you asked Ms. Karen Curry? Her line and her statement said she would not personally pay it from there. That's what she said, and she said there would be differing in opinions about it. Mr. Wilkinson has also indicated that he has some pause about it because there's, there's no guidance at this time. Mr. Wilkinson also said it could be used for any legal purpose. I guess the question is, how do we get off of this point that we're now? Do they need to appropriate based on, would you be more comfortable, Mr. Wilkinson, with them appropriating based on general funds? Or what is the solution to this? It's basically what we're going, because we're going in circles.
Yeah, well, a couple of, just real quick. One, it's not just the care, the rescue plan and the guidance, whether, what it says, what it doesn't say, because it is silent on this. So the, the feds could change it. Your other big worry is the federal rules, the uniform grant guidance rules themselves, which have certain provisions in there that are fairly broadly used by treasury or auditor from time to time to pop a city. Do I think it's likely? I don't know, I can't, I, I don't know. The money that's got a lot of different people. I'm not sure how much, how much person power the feds have to come, come to Helena West, Helena, or any city or town for that matter, and take a look at it. Now, with that said, the reason Karen didn't care for this, and the reason it gives me pause, is that you have tied in section five directly to the premium pay stuff. So what, what's interesting about this is you said, said, said fund payments are to be calculated in the same method as stated above for premium pay. So what you've done is you said eligible workers are entitled to this under these, under these frameworks. So I'm not sure now that I read this even closer, that this even really works because you've tied it all back into premium pay. You've said, go look at premium pay up here and calculate it. But at the same time, you said that, that this is for people that aren't entitled to premium pay. So now you're sort of going back and forth. And now, now that I look at it closer, I'm not sure how you're supposed to read this. Is the mayor supposed to go back and say, okay, this person did not work these hours, they don't get anything? Maybe they do. Maybe they said no city council members or no city officials worked the requisite hours to get anything. I don't know, because you've directly tied it into premium pay, which causes that problem, but also causes Karen's problem of you're basically saying we're going to use a premium pay, or just not call it premium pay, but it's just like premium pay. And the feds, I don't know, they may not look kindly at that. I don't know, nobody really knows. So to answer your question, I don't want to tell y'all what to do, but this needs to be looked at even closer, especially in a lot of the lawsuit. The premium pay aspect though, that, all that, that's fine. That, that is what it is, let the mayor do the math, pay out the money, move on. But this section five, that's a, that may be an issue.
I, I didn't ask this before I forget, because I was asked it and I didn't have an answer. If someone worked during that period, is no longer on the payroll, are they obligated to any premium pay?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. We don't know, we've had this question too. I mean, that, there's no guidance on this. These are the kind of the, the really nuanced, minute, detailed things that treasurer's not going to tell us yes or no. And so, you know, that, you know, so your, your ordinance, I think one ordinance or one resolution I read, I forgot the city, said, should I provide premium pay to eligible current workers at the time of the resolution? I don't think y'all, oh no, y'all do say that, you say currently employed. So in the date of enactment, so yeah, so you're covered there.
Yeah, this was the standard one that we received.
This is the one that I remember reading.
Right, and that's what I said, we said current employees.
That should take care of that question.
Okay, so the answer to that would be no, they wouldn't be eligible.
If they're not, if they're unemployed, then yes, correct.
The, the only concern I have, and you've got a couple of good lawyers here, three, at least three, three good lawyers. When it comes to the federal government, what ultimately happens with these questions is that somebody sues somebody and it goes to federal court and it goes to federal judge, then it goes to an appeals court judge, and then it will go to the supreme court and the supreme court will rule. And they will decide. They'll decide. And whatever they decide, or if they don't hear the case, the lower courts decide in the federal court, will be what happens. And we'll either have to pay it back or we won't. That happens all the time with state government. I could give you plenty of examples of it, where the state government says it's silent, let's move forward, do it. And then somebody sues in some state somewhere, if not Arkansas, and they lose or they win or whatever, there's a federal court ruling and the state has to find the money to pay it back. The state can afford to do that. The city of Helena West, Helena cannot. So we have to be very careful moving forward when it's silent on guidance. Now, where it's forthright and bold, I think, you know, then I think we can be bold and forthright. But where it's silent and doesn't give direction, it, it gives me a lot of concern or pause these. Well, but not on every question. I mean, I just gave you some examples of questions that didn't, didn't have clear guidance.
Just think that the city treasurer, who is over, you know, tell us what we have. The city attorney, who's been to law school. And you have Mr. Wilkinson here, you have another attorney here. These people are not going to put their law license on the line or their credibility on the line. It leads me to believe that you don't trust nobody but what you think. You know, regardless of what this body tells you, regardless of what the lawyer tells you, what the city treasurer tell you, you make up your own rules as you go. And I don't know why it's so hard. We had to call, we had to call somebody down here to tell you the same thing as these two, the treasurer and the city attorney told you. You don't want to hear from him or him. You like to do things your way. We, everything that's being done, we having a whole meeting about stuff that these folks, the city attorney has told you. The treasurer has told you. You still saying the same thing about somebody else coming to Helena, telling you how to run Helena. But these folks gave you the same advice. We had almost an hour going back and forth about what these folks had told you. Just say it. Just be a man about, they said, I don't want to pay nobody nothing. I don't, I want to do what I want to do, that's what you do. You don't, you don't care what these people tell you at this table to do. You are Kevin Smith. You don't follow by nobody's rules. You worry about being audited. You worry about being spending money other places. And when it comes to this body directing you to do something and the lawyer who went to law school, the treasurer who's in CPA school, tell you do something? No, you got to call Mary in Little Rock, Paul and Marianna to get them to do the same thing that these folks had told you. It's like we just
Mr. Franklin, is this about you not getting a bonus or a pandemic payment? What is, what, I mean, what's your speech about? Because actually, if you were listening, what you would have heard here.
I don't need
What you would have heard here, we've already spoken. If you would have heard, if you would have listened, what you would have heard is there are a lot of gray areas when it comes to this, number one. Number two, every city employee who was eligible under the guidelines and the stipulations in the math that we were given from the municipal received up to $4,000. That's a lot of money, that's more than most people, yet most people don't even get that. So I'm, I'm glad that it worked out for most employees, almost, well, all of our employees just about, except the more recently hired employees and those that the municipal league said were not eligible. Or were beyond the, the income limit, which we got more guidance on tonight. So I'm proud that we were able to do it, on it. So the only thing I could think of, Mr. Franklin, is that you didn't get anything. Is that, is that your real problem?
Okay.
Is that what your speech is really about?
Can I answer?
Or is it about your concern?
Can I, can I answer?
Is it about your concern for everybody?
Okay, can I answer?
Employees got $4,000.
Let, let me, let me answer your question. I don't care about a dime. If I was so worried about some money, I, let me tell you something. I would like to be like you. That's my whole thing, to be ignorant, just like you. Because for you to sit here and tell me that I need some money.
So you're saying you're not going to accept any kind of payment?
You know what?
From, is that what you're saying?
That's what you're saying, you can't, you don't ask me anything. What you should, what you should be worried about.
Tony, I voluntarily, just like I did last year and year before, will not accept it.
See, that, that's the thing.
So I'm asking you, will you do that?
Would I do what?
Voluntarily admit?
Yeah, I'm volunteering right now.
You won't accept any pandemic, any kind of bonus or any?
So will you?
I've already done it.
Okay, I'm gonna be just like you, quiet.
Are you going to sign a letter and say that, like I did?
Yeah, I'm a silent one. I'm a silent one to take everything that offered me.
Ms. Crockett, this is, this is the process and I appreciate you being part of it. I will say this though, if I may, so that we don't, you'll do what you gotta do, obviously, but I, I'm committed to being here. And that not, that's not just here, I mean, not just tonight, but when I go back, we'll, we'll try to make our way through this because we have a lawsuit pending that y'all submitted for us for coverage. And we're dedicated to getting you through this, so I hope you can take solace. We're doing our best in very uncertain terms and uncertain circumstances.
This value.
Mr. Wilson definitely reminded me of something. The coverage that we were approved for in this case is just defense only. All payments will be made by the city. If we have to pay any, anything will be paid by the city. I just wanted to advise you all of that, but go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Wilkinson, thank you. You, and I'm backtracking because it passes a while back. You gave an example of an appropriation for a fire truck. And the mayor having the authority to either buy the truck or not buy the truck. How do you reconcile that with an appropriation for, you know, saying unvetoed appropriation for compensation for hours already worked?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Mr. Franklin. I mean, you've, you've nailed it and I, I don't know the answer to that. It's, it's a i- i- in, in normal circumstances, it'd be a lot cleaner cut. But because this is federal money, grant money on different premises and different, you know, whatever, it's open and shut. We just don't know the answer to it. But, but we just got the lawsuit, you know, what, a week ago, and Mr. Andre letter or email, maybe a few days before that. So we, our mind, we've been thinking on it, but we don't know the answer right offhand. That's, that's an excellent point, and that, that's kind of what we're struggling with right now.
But I do want to make the point that I asked that question before any lawsuit was filed and before we issued any checks. And the answer that I got was that it was the same. Not considered uncompensated work already approved. And so, and it, it was basically at the mayor's discretion. So that was the advice I got at the time. I asked that specific question and that's the advice I got. Like I said, a lot of these issues are ultimately decided. I don't know about this lawsuit, but eventually a lot of these things do end up in federal court somewhere. And a decision gets made and that's how we'll all end up doing it, if that's, if that's the case. What I want to do is make sure that we're never exposed to having to pay that back. We just got through paying back or agreeing to a settlement over $2 million. We just settled a tax debt that was estimated at 750,000 for 26,000, something like that. We've had to deal with federal debt. It's not a pleasant thing. We weren't able to, are eligible to apply for federal grants for years because of a 20-year-old debt that the Department of Justice was trying to collect regarding the Corps of Engineers that we settled since I've been mayor. It's a very serious issue. We're eligible for almost every federal program in the country, but we haven't been able to apply for them. We just got a cops grant, we weren't eligible to apply because the debt that we owe the federal government. I don't want us to get in that situation again. So all employees except elected officials and those who were up to October 31st employed, according to the resolution, were paid up to $4,000. That is a lot of money. I'm glad that we were able to do it. I'm glad that y'all supported it. I'm not exactly sure what we're arguing about here tonight unless it's about elected officials and the four individuals who made over $67,000. But I know one thing, we're a poor city. We have a lot of needs. Our employees have a lot of needs. That was something that, that I know they appreciated. And I'm glad we were able to do it. And I'm glad the federal government and there aren't some municipal, helped us do it in the council. But we have a lot of needs and a lot of things on our plate. And we can't afford to be in a position where we might have to pay money back. We're still waiting on some kind of third party or second party confirmation of what the lost revenue is. And the bill in Congress hasn't been approved yet. That says we can spend it on any government service. And there are a lot of gray areas with this and any other federal program, which is normal. So in my experience, it's, it's advisable and it's wise to do the most you possibly can and at the same time not expose yourself to having to pay it back. And at the same time, not expose yourself to having to pay it back.
I, I got a question.
Ms. Crockett, then Mr. Franklin.
Okay, from what Mr. Valley, Andre Valley just stated, that. Depending on how long we get into the lawsuit, depending on the lawsuit. We're only going to be covered by an unlawful legal. You're setting making a statement that we'll have to pay something back, pay something back. If this case goes to court and we lose, we'll be in worse shape than we would be if, if it had been paid on the front.
Can I, can I make a comment? So back, back to what I said about me here for y'all even after tonight. I'll figure that out first, or I'll do my best to figure that out and go come back to the mayor and say, look. Basically, basically what Mr. Ethely said and what Mr. Valley said is that, you know, let's, let's look at this. And if I come in and say, look, I, you know, I think. Think it's right. I think he has, the mayor has to pay or the county has to pay. I'll let you know. So I, I'm not, my point in coming down here is to help you through the rest of the plan, obviously. But try to get us on the path to figuring out what, what path is for the lawsuit itself. And it may just be cutting our losses, paying the money and moving on. It may be paying part of it, not paying some of it. I don't know yet. But, you know, the mayor's right that there's a chance that we have to pay it all back at some point. You know, you're right that, you know, we may be in court, be told to do the same thing anyway. So. By the way, I'm not, again, I don't know anything about the overtime part of this and I have no knowledge of the overtime portion of James's, James Valley's complaint. Sorry, didn't, just want to interject that, but I'll figure it out. I promise you that.
But just, I do say, because you were there, I did ask the question. And it was before any lawsuit was filed, long before. If this were, was mandatory action that we had to take and I was required to take, or whether I still had discretion like any other normal appropriation. And I want to confirm that for the record, did I ask that question? That I had asked the question long before the.
You did.
The answer was that it was, as far as the municipal league understood, no different.
That was, that was what we thought at the beginning and now we've got a lawsuit. So obviously, as any good lawyer will know, you reassess your position to make sure you're on the right. But he did. He, he, he did ask the question. That was our recommendation, at least generally, that, yeah. But since then, we've, we've rethought it and, you know, maybe, you know, you know, maybe it was incorrect. Nobody really knows all that, but, but generally speaking, yeah. We, we equate it to a fire truck because that's what we usually deal with. Just a little bit different. Is it so different? We don't know.
If I may, the language that we, that's been discussed back and forth about the lost revenue. That was also ran by the municipal league at the time. Suit was turned and the language was placed in the resolution. And so the language is what it is at, at this point.
Section five?
Section five.
Um, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we emailed that to you all, but the, the issue is this. There are three lawyers here now. There's one on, one online. You have a lawyer suing. The more and more lawyers you get to look at it, the more and more opinions you're going to get about it. All of us going to be a little different in some way about all this stuff. But the issue is generally speaking, but what has been agreed upon. Is that the lost revenue should be spent for any lawful purpose. The caveat is some other federal regulations that, that, that clearly on point relating to this being given to the city and being used for. A particular purpose. And Ms. Curry has emailed the mayor before and told the mayor that she would not personally use it for this purpose and she's administrative of the. And so that's where we are. That area is, is, is clear in some areas, but it's uncomfortable in other areas. And I think that where we are at, at this, at this point.
Yeah.
And so the, is, I think if you ask Mr. Wilkinson, me, Mr. Ethely, if you ask Ms. Curry. If you ask James Vanna, all of us would give you slightly different answers as how we were posted. The question at this point is what it going, now that you've been told this and been given three or four different legal opinions about the same thing.
Yeah, but you know, we're definitely all in this together. I promise you that.
Mr. Franklin.
Well, man, I want to tell you this. When you was talking about, we were not able to see federal, federal funds. You said about 27 years ago that we have, were not able to receive federal funds. And that what you said. Right?
Which point?
My point is who was in, who was the mayor then?
I don't want to fit that person.
Yes.
It was not my mother.
It was. That's why we couldn't receive any, any federal money because your mother.
There was a phase two under, under.
The money that we.
If you, if you're going to make allegations, then you need to back them up.
I can back them up. You got to see the, see the clerk here. She was here at the time.
Yeah, and, and I can tell you.
Yeah.
One of.
That's a big gap. Boom. Your mom was in charge. You just cleaned up her, her old debt.
My mother was in charge when she got the grant to help. In this city, but she was not the mayor. No, 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 this is important. Point of personal, no, personal privilege. Mr. Franklin. The facts are, the facts are. The ministry, no, sir, you're interrupting. You don't want the truth.
Can't handle it.
Mr. Franklin. The record shows very clearly, Mr. Franklin.
Because your mama left it in such a bad shape.
Mr. Franklin, nobody, nobody, nobody agrees with your assessment, number one. Number, number two, you're talking over me because you don't want to hear the truth.
Cause you, you talked over me.
The truth is that the money that we owed came from the next administration. And the paperwork that was not submitted for an amendment to that program that came after. Now, you, you're talking because you don't want anybody to hear me. Because you don't want anybody to hear the truth. And you don't run this meeting.
You don't either.
Yes, I do. And I'm, and I'm going to tell you for the, for the record.
It's your mama bankrupt.
That, that the, that the federal debt was incurred and the administration that followed my mother's. And an amendment to the Corps of Engineers program and the paperwork that was not submitted. That would have guaranteed us or given us the in-kind donations that we were supposed to do. And so it converted back to cash. And, and I had to become mayor and, and study this and get us out of this debt after 20 years. You've been here how long? What did you do? Nothing. Nothing, except talk. Mr. 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 Valley.
I don't want to go through all of that, but.
Mr. Val.
On that limited issue. In defense of city council members in previous administrations. When we consolidated all the debts that were known at the time were given to the city. And that was not listed as one of the debts that were given to the city. So consolidating city wasn't aware of the debt until Mayor Hollowell came right before, he got notified right before your administration. That's his point.
I've got, I've got files with emails and, and literature going all the way back. I've got a complete file of it. We had to research it because we were trying to get out of. The debt is a federal debt. It makes no difference whether it was on some form or not. It existed and it was with the Department of Treasury at the time in an offset program. And then it got sent to the Department of Justice. Because we ignored the emails and we ignored the phone calls and we ignored the letters. And in March, three months after I was inaugurated, I flew up in the settlement process and we got out from under that and saved the city over $2 million.
Man, we're not disputing that part. All I said.
I'm, I'm trying to, I don't want to get this city back in the same mess it was in before. And if we're not careful, if we're not careful, when, are we going to get federally audited? Will we be audited on this money?
Well, I assume you're getting more than $750,000 in federal money, so I would assume.
So yes, the answer is we will be audited. And when we're audited, I do not want us to owe that money. Back to the federal government and get back on the list where we're not eligible for federal money in the future.
And I was making a point of clarity. Ms. Ramsey was here, I was here, Mr. Ethel was here. The entire municipal league came down, Miss Columbia came, we came down, we had a meeting in PC. All the debts of the city were given to the city council. And the city council, the mayor, the administration, and that debt was never told to the administration. There was a consolidation committee that met, went through all the, for a possible six months that was generated from PC. And they went through all the debts as part of consolidation and that debt was not aware to the consolidated city. Had it been, had this consolidated city had been made aware of it. The consolidated city would admit and try to do it. Now, we appreciate your efforts. And getting it resolved. And I'm not laying blame. I'm not getting land blame on any administration. I'm just trying to clear the record. Because Mr. Ethel was there, Ms. Ramsey was there, Ms. St. Columbia was there and I was there. And until Mayor Hollowell came, none of us knew of a federal debt. And in fact, that we were receiving. Reginald Wilson was regularly receiving USDA grants. He received two or three fire trucks through then Chief Reginald Wilson. And they received cop grants for Helena. So it wasn't until the administration with Mayor Hollowell that the federal government actually made us aware of it. Now, we appreciate your efforts. We applaud you.
You weren't the city attorney at our time, were you?
I was city attorney during consolidation.
But not that entire 20-year period.
No, I, I would say the city.
Other city attorneys who do have, did get correspondence during that period.
I'm saying.
That you might not be aware of. And my point is, even though the college was involved, even though the municipal league was involved, I don't doubt anything you said, Mr. Valley. My point is the federal government doesn't quite, really don't, they don't care. Either, and that's proof of it. We owed it and we didn't even know it. To get us in the same position again.
We're not getting.
It's that simple.
We're not getting in that position. That's first.
Not yet.
Well, mayor, that position clearly was for the record, for the public. That was a debt that was paid. And so all I was saying, Claire, that you and Mr., you and Mr. Franklin went back and forth about who's the blame. I don't care about any of that. I was just making a point of clarity. About when it came apart and I was complimenting you, but you can't accept a compliment, but I was talking about complimenting you for getting it done. That's, that's all I did.
Well, I accept your compliment. Thank you. Now, don't disagree with what your memory is. It's just that the federal government didn't much care what we thought. And that's my point. The federal government can do what it wants to do. And it did in that case. Oh, it can't do it again.
This is different.
This is different. We're never going to know the answer to this question until the audit comes down. We're doing the best we can in this situation. Mr. St. Columbia is next, then Mr. Ford.
Mr. Mayor. I recall the situation. I was on the Helen Improvement District. On the levy board when all this was done. We were told that the in-kind that we provided, such as land and our usage of. Equipment and what have you compensated. That did not transpire. And a debt was accumulated. I think it all began when your mother was, was mayor. But when she left office, Dr. Miller became the mayor. That's when it was finalized. And I recall at that time. CDs in the name of the city of $60,000. Then Mayor Smith, his mother, handed over to Dr. Miller. The city was not broke at that time. I can tell you, I recall that. I'm 83 years old. I served under his mother. I served under Dr. Miller and I'll the record and you can go back and check it. I was on the Helen Improvement District when all this began. And it was because of the drainage that caused that debt. And the federal government did not finalize and recognize as they said they would because we dealt with the Corps of Engineers. And we were told by the Corps of Engineers that what we served as in-kind would serve as part of that debt that we accumulated. So that's how it all happened. And we ended up with a debt. I thought it was more than $700,000. Yeah, but, and it hung over our head for a long, long time. Until this mayor went to Washington and got it taken care of and resolved that we would pay, what, $200,000 or $300,000 or whatever. We were excused that debt. But that's the history of the debt.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Mr. Ford's next, then Mr. Valley.
Reiterate again.
We'll try to wrap up on this.
That the, the party is and that the chief of police and bar, that they will be compensated under that.
And according to the advice given by Mr. Wilkinson, they, under the, under the premium pay, they should be compensated. Using the same calculations, the Americans can document that they worked. From February 2nd, 2020 through October 31st, 2021. And they worked requisite hours and, and explain the reason why they're getting paid. You had, you had one police officer and you had. Is that a fair regurgitation of what you said, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, you mentioned that overtime. I'm not quite sure. I'm sorry, I can't.
Mr. Franklin.
Can you take your phone call outside?
That was the person that.
Can you take your cell phone call? Mr. Franklin.
Overtime. And then.
Can you take your phone call outside?
I mean, that wasn't the regular salary, but she, they worked overtime. Were compensated.
Did the overtime put them over the top? Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I don't know the answer to that, but again, the safest bet is just to assume that the overtime put them over.
I just wanted to.
And then just, yeah, I would just be, here's the other thing, documenting that people are entitled to it. Never, there's no such thing as too much documentation. I can promise you that. There you go. That's right. My three favorite words in it. That's right. Document, document, document.
Mr. Wilson, I think the, the only question that's left is the lost revenue and. What does the body go from here on that? Is that something you just want to discuss later? Before you begin to address that, well, thankful for you being here. It's 7:40 now. He has a two-hour drive. So I want us to be cautious. Mr. Wilson's time and he has to get home in a safe hour. So to the step we can get to a point where he could be excused, we would greatly, greatly appreciate it.
So as a lost revenue goes, so you're talking about section five of this?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I don't remember, you know, I don't remember. I don't remember what Karen and I talked about when it came to this, except to say what, what I already talked about. As far as lost revenue goes. I don't know. I need to, I need to, I need to think on that one again because.
That's fair enough.
Now, now that we're looking at it with fresh eyes and after a lawsuit, you know, which is a good time to look at stuff, let me take a closer look at that. But at the same time, you know, it, it's a government purpose, I presume. So, you know, I don't know the answer to that right now.
Any other questions? Mr. Wilson, thank you again for driving me over here during, especially during a lot of time, a lot of people are on vacation this time of year. So I know it's hardship for you, but we appreciate your time. We appreciate your effort. We appreciate the municipal league.
Yeah.
And all you, all you do for us. And I, I, I forgot to say, I always try to say when I introduce the. People in Arkansas are used to being, it's saying thank God for Mississippi and being 47th and 48th. And art, when it comes to municipal leagues, the Arkansas Municipal League is considered one of the top five, if not one of the top two or three municipal leagues in the country. And most of our cities don't know that. They think, they, they take for granted. They think all cities and all states are like this, but the truth is. Arkansas Municipal League is definitely down that. Organization that we should all be proud of in Arkansas, not just as cities. And we, you are one of the best in the country and have been for decades. And probably a member of it and we're proud to be associated with you and we thank you for all you do.
Appreciate it. Let me know if I can do anything to help you out further. I'm always here. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So one item of business. We have a couple of items. Before we go forward.
For letting Mr. Wilkinson have your seat. You can come back here.
Yeah, before we go forward, it's one, one of the primary things we need to do tonight. Okay, I, yeah. Is we need to appropriate funds through February the first, 2022. At the, or extend the budget through February 1st, 2022, so to have operating authority. Up until February 1st. Because that's why the city, the city shuts down on. Yeah, city shuts down Friday night at, at the. 11:59.
I'm ready, Mr. Wilson, we continue with the.
2021?
21, 2021 budget until we approve the 2022 budget.
So you're extending up to February the first?
Mr. St. Columbia, move to extend the budget for 2021 to February 1st, 22. Is there a second? Mr. Franklin seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the roll.
Ethely?
Yes.
Franklin, Crockett, St. Columbia, five yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. So we'll also start budget hearings, budget meetings pretty soon. Next item on the, on the agenda and I'm. And I'm at a lot. I don't have my watch, but your phone, so I'm not sure what the time is, but.
7:26.
7:26. So, so we'll try to get these if we can. Ordinance 42, welcome for pickup charter fire department chief Brown. How many times it's been on the agenda, but Chief Brown needs new truck. Mr. Franklin moves, but we have to.
Ms. Ramsey.
So is your motion to suspend rules placed on Thursday, Friday, read, read the title?
So let's pause for a second. This is, this is on the state contract?
Yeah.
So it doesn't really need to be.
So it doesn't really need to be bid.
But it does need to be approved.
It has to be approved, it's not, it doesn't have to be bid. Okay. So the motion is for, to appropriate, how much money? Towards the purpose of a truck at state contract rate, uh, for the fire department. Just for the fire department.
So, as the motion is stated, uh, and made by Mr. Franklin, is there a second? St. Columbia's next motion, and Ms. Crockett, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. What, what, uh, we don't have for one code enforcement now, what is the other truck doing? Yeah, the other two trucks that we have for the code enforcement, what are they doing?
This point of clarity, can we discuss that after we finish this, that's not related to the fire? Okay.
The, uh, the, um, truck that was being used to tie a port, basically, kind of flutter trucks, we've been using it for people that need a truck, they don't need that truck dedicated to them. Um, until, um, until we find a better use for it. So we've used it for, uh, trips to the academies, um, uh, trips to different projects and different people that work for the city that don't have a truck, but sometimes need access to one, have used it.
So we got three trucks in total, right?
Two, I think.
Three.
That's what I do not ask.
You have the one that was Mr. Gantz. Um, then the one that the animal control officer uses, and I don't know who's the servant with it.
I don't think we have three, we have two.
The, oh, Mr. Merrick, I mean.
Ms. Williams has a truck, he's.
But Mr. Williams didn't have a code animal.
Well, the, the truck's a city truck.
It was all for code, man, I'll do that.
He's, he's still doing code. He's still our chief code officer, he's our licensed code officer for the city. Our new code officer has not been in class or been legally authorized, so, uh, he's not being compensated for it, but he is a nor for animal control, but he is currently our chief legal person when it comes to code and animal control, and he is still using that truck. We have the second. We have the second, I'm not, I'm not aware if that person's up to date legally, but, uh, I'd like to know if he is. Um, but the other truck you're talking about is what we're calling the flutter truck, because a lot of people have used it.
So what is the present code enforcement user?
She's not using the truck, which is, I mean, she has, um, used it for different field work, but she doesn't use it, um, on a regular basis, let's say, like her predecessor did.
Is there a reason for that?
Primarily, a lot of the work she's been doing is, is in the office, the computer, some of the legal work, the correspondence work, she, but she has used it in the field.
Okay.
So.
I just got one thing that you're saying that the code force, code enforcement truck, it's still being used by someone who is employed by the landfill because they're, and they're being paid from the landfill, but they're getting, they're using, doing code enforcement work. Am I getting, am I understanding you right?
He is, that's correct. He's still doing code and animal control work, because he's our. Not at all, there are, there, there are a lot of, there are a lot of positions that people have to take on responsibilities, they're legally licensed to do, that's not necessarily what they're compensated. It's included in their duties.
So do that, you want to do this, what, for what they're getting paid for?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Any, uh, any other questions about this motion on the floor? Ms. Ford?
The designation of trucks in departments.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that they can't be designated for a department?
I said that they're purchased, but they're designated to the department, not the individual.
Okay, well.
Is what I said.
Irrelevant, eh?
Yeah, but she was, but Madam Clark, when she, uh, when she did that, she's saying it because that's the person who needs the vehicle. But within the department, it's between the department head as to who drives what vehicle, that's, that's day-to-day, as to who drives what vehicle. You know, you're not making a purchase for the individuals, for the department.
For the department.
Right.
So, if, but the vehicle was made for certain department, that's where it's supposed to be, right?
It should typically be used in this, I haven't, there's no, there's nothing legally wrong with it being used in another department. For instance, that is just that we historically have, but a water department has allowed sanitation people to use some of their pickup trucks at some point, or code enforcement, or vehicles are reassigned from one department to another department. Uh, it's for the, it's whatever's in the best interest for the city to accomplish this, uh, administrative purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Any other que, motion for counsel? Okay, not call the roll.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford? Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin? St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Five yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Um, Ms. Valley, I think you're gonna take the, uh, Harvey case. You want to deal with that?
Yes, I emailed George, just simply to make an appropriation on the Nate Harvey case. They had submitted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar attorney fee bill, they did petition, and it's been back and forth between the, the petition, counter petition, et cetera. Was just finally did an order that emailed you, or they reduced his attorney fees down. Uh, I don't remember the precise number, but it's in the.
Forty-three thousand for copying.
Right, forty-three thousand?
Mm-hmm, total.
Right, and we're responsible for half of this, the judge cut him extraordinarily. And part of that, it was cut in, because he had been compensated by the police benedamment fund also. And so that's part of the reason why it's turned the fee been reduced so low. But it's one of the things we talk about in mediation regulated, the, the largest part of these lawsuits that we had to be afraid of is not, is not necessarily the claimant. It's attorney's fees. Because his petition was for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but the court still approved, uh, forty, forty-three thousand plus three thousand dollars in cost, of which, under, under the agreement we have with municipal league, we're responsible for half of that. And so, uh, I'm sure he's gonna file a petition for reconsideration, considering it was cut so much. Uh, but I don't know, but in this coming year's budget, we need to make an appropriation for at least half of, half of that, those funds. So we. Half of the forty-six to forty-three plus the three.
No, no, it, it, it's gonna be, it's forty thousand in reimbursement of cost in the amount of three thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. So it'll be half of the forty-three, forty-nine, forty-five.
Yeah, so approximately twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Right, that's the city's obligation under that. And that's in addition to the three thousand we've already paid the municipal league on there.
I really, I don't have a question about the appropriation part of that. So we're, the, the motion is to appropriate the money to pay it.
I would give you a notice, you're gonna appropriate it in next year's budget, but not, we're not gonna pay it the next year, I don't think, I don't know if you have the funds available now, but, uh.
So you're just reporting on the settlement?
I'm reporting on the settlement, I just wanted to make sure you're aware, because at the previous two council meetings, I'd made you aware that our portion would have been sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, if, if he granted the full amount. Now, this is an anomaly, usually fees are not cut this practically. I fully expected somewhere around eighty or ninety thousand dollars based on the petition. However, municipal league researched, and he had been compensated by the police benedamment fund also. And so that's why it was so drastically cut.
Any questions, Mr. Valley? On the settlement?
What is the bottom line, Claire?
Mr. Valley?
We should appropriate approximately twenty-two thousand dollars out in next year's budget. It's gonna have to be paid sooner rather than later. Yeah, but this, this is just a point of clarity for, for, for you all. Over tonight, that's fine, if you want to wait till next week, you do have a meeting next week.
Okay, we can handle it next week.
All right. And, and you've submitted this to, uh, Mr. Turner, so that he's.
Yes, I copied him on the email.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay. If not, um, thank you, Mr. Val, so we're gonna move on to the animal containment complex, so, um, I don't know how many times this has been on agenda, uh, be answering any questions about it. Ms. Crockett?
Oh, no, Ms. Ford, now I've already been delivered.
Half of it was delivered.
But.
The other half, the other half has not.
Okay, so why are we voting on?
Because if we did the other half, it'd be over my spending money.
So this, this far, we're nobody was spending it?
No, ma'am.
How much was this, Ms. Val?
Uh, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, what's the other half, eh? What else?
The total, the total bill is nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
It's all in one, one thing, right? It's all one package.
Well, we had to make a, a down payment.
They come in two, in two segments, and the other segment will be delivered Thursday, if y'all.
I'm saying, if, okay, the part that we got delivered, eh, that's like whenever, delivered to the landfill, is it payable? Or is it included in the nine hundred, I mean, the nine thousand dollars?
It's, it's a part of the nine thousand.
So, that, so how do you approve something that, I mean, how do you spend something?
Well, the, the answer to your question is, Crockett, is, is pretty simple.
Okay, I'm ready.
This, this issue, first of all, the, uh, we went looking for some kind of animal containment system many, many months, in fact, um, I'd say more than a year ago. We've had, you've heard about the supply chain issues. See, all the ones we looked at, um, in fact, all the animal control products that we look at have some severe supply chain issues. For example, we have three or four darts right now. It's something like a fourteen-month waiting period to get more darts for the cart gun. Uh, control facilities are dealing with this. Um, actually, when we started looking at this, we couldn't, we're seeing the events, uh, that were going on with the humane society, but taking the city's dogs anyway, so it really didn't have a big impact on it. The bottom line is, in order to try and get it here by now, had to put a deposit back. Brought it up to the council, council didn't approve it, but in order to get it ordered. So, um, that's the answer to your question. If we, if, if, well, I mean, the answer is, if we'd waited until you approved it, we'd be waiting another nine months to a year to get a containment system because of the supply chain issues. Um, we have a severe animal control problem on our streets. I don't think I have to tell you all that. We've had a lot of citizens, um, bitten, viciously attacked by dogs, we have dogs wandering all over our streets. We have not had a, a, a actual city, true animal control program, animal containment system here for the city since long before I was mayor. And, and there's, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, it just is what it is. So what we're trying to do is have a place to put these animals to meet state and local law when it comes to control, so that we can deal with the issue on our streets, or at least begin to. Um, we're all, most of us here in this room are elected officials, we all answer to our constituents. I know you know that we have a problem, I'd simply ask you to help us solve it, uh, by approving the animal containment operations tonight. And that's, that's, that's it. Either we're gonna try to solve this problem, or not.
Okay, okay, now you had your turn, so can I have my turn without your interruption?
Ma'am, go for it.
Okay, so what you're basically saying is that you went ahead, even though this has not passed at any time, but you went ahead and you purchased customers, but it's looking like to me now is, we're obligated for nine thousand, whatever it is dollars, because you made the first down payment without approval. So, to me, it's in my mind, and it's just my little mind, it seems to me that you gonna do what you wanna do, no matter what the cost, it ends up costing the city. Because like right now, if this is not approved, and you go on and spend that money, the nine thousand dollars on the, the auditor's gonna get you, remember, you, you scared the dogs, we're gonna be audited on that. But anything that seems to be approved by this body, you bump heads with us about it. But you are so fast to tell the people that the council won't cooperate with you, and this is just, this is one of these mine. In my mind, it's saying that is Mayor Kevin Smith, or not, is, this has not been approved. You, you got a man that's being paid out of one fund, working another fund, you got, uh, trucks that were bought for one place that's in another place. This is, as you stated out of your mouth, this has been brought up to the council numerous times about this dog, so we have never voted on it, eh? But you've taken it for yourself now, saying that it was not above your spending limit, and in our actuality, it is. You can spend the down payment, but the down payment does not pay for the, the whole thing, so it's above your spending limit. And you, you want, on certain things, you want to act like you know everything, and now you're saying that you think that you spent the down payment, and that was in your spending limit. A down payment does not pay for it. Your spending limit is, is something costs five thousand dollars, cut and dry, that we own it. There's no more debt to it, that, you can do that. You can't go out and put a down payment on something that costs five thousand dollars and say that it was above your, meaning it was in your spending limit, that's not your spending limit. And I know you know that, because you're not crazy, you just wanna do what you want to do. So now it's like, you want us to come back and, as always, and like I said, as Mr. Wilkerson says, eh, you want us to clean it up now. But I just don't understand, like, you want us to break for you, but you want to break for us. And it's all in the, all I'm doing is in the wellness of the city. But you, you'll go out and you'll do the serial contracts, and I was so glad to hear Mr. Wilkerson saying that the battle was a very good attorney. Nothing Mr. Val had to do, you listen to. Mr. Val has told you numerous times about the contracts, and you still try to make it seem like you don't think that they're serial contracts. It has been explained to you, but that's something that you must do. We approved as a body for the, the people who do the actual work out here, to be compensated one thing, but you keep saying in your mind, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of money. I, and I'm not being, I'm not bragging or everything, but once they took out of their four thousand dollars, most people probably came home thirty-two. In this day and time, thirty-two hundred thousand ain't no lot of money. It, it probably helped a whole lot of people, but I believe they got that extra, you know, just to make the, the people who actually do the work know that you appreciate them. Don't always give it to the people who are already making, uh, these people that, that that money was supposed to go to. They averaged on the amount of twenty-five thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. The people that you want us to pay average on the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, sixty-five thousand, seventy-five thousand. Those people are already, not saying that they don't deserve it, they, the work they deserved also. But it's like, we just fed the frog for the snake. We're not trying to help the people who actually need it, and it's, you always try to make it seem like the council is against you, is against you. And like I said, I tell people all the time, I went to the math class, I went to battles of us, and five people can sit at a table and agree on something, and then one person come back and object to, I need you to make me do the math and help me do the math to see who's not willing to participate, to study time out, we're gonna be arguing. Do you realize that we go to court right now, and the lawsuit that is pending passes, we're gonna be out of double what would have been paid before? So to me, it's not, and, and this is just me again, it's not so much that you wanna worry about the audience, I think your big thing is, you feel that since you didn't pay the elected officials, or who made it, I think it's personal, that's just me again. Because you go, we said five thousand, you come up with four thousand to try to make it seem like, well, I'm gonna give y'all something. I don't know if you know it or not, but a lot of people were offended by that fifteen hundred dollars, but you said, that's a lot of money, that's all you need. I think if, if it was up to me and we could afford it, I think everybody in this city needs ten more thousand dollars that work for the city. The sanitation department, the police department, most definitely, are most, are some of the most underpaid people. And we have a police officer, one or two officers now, that's being penalized because they. because they were trying to protect the city because nobody else wanted to come out, not even the chief. They were out trying to protect the city, the senate. But now they're being penalized, and they were out there every day being exposed to color. But now they are, they are being penalized. So don't try to make it seem like that we're not working with you. Because everything I do, I do from my heart. I don't do because, I'm, I'm not saying that I wouldn't, if I was given the, the incentive, yes, I would take it. But I'm not saying that I'm starting for it. It's not gonna break me or make me. So don't make it seem like that I'm just trying, you know, fighting for everybody else because I own it. Because either way it goes, I got somebody that's gonna take care of me, and I ain't talking about no man, no woman, no boy, no girl, I'm talking about good Lord. He gonna make a way for me because I serve him. So don't, let's, let's get these personal feelings off the table. Let's try to make this city move forward. As long as you sit there because Mr. Franklin says something, I don't care if he said the moon is brown. And everybody's looking at it brown, you gonna come back and say, no, I know that moon gray. But let's, let's, that's Mr. Franklin, me, you, anybody at this stage. We need to get this personal stuff off of the table and stop worrying about the concerns of this city. Because I don't know if you know, but I ride this city daily, and I live in this city, and been here all my life, all fifty-six years. And I see the difference in what a day makes. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrot.
I believe we are on the floor for the approval of the truck based on state contract.
Uh, no.
No, we did.
We did that. Now, this, we're on the, uh, animal containment. Discussing it. I don't think we have a motion or a second. So, Mr. Franklin.
With those, with those containers, uh, I, I just. With those containers, I do believe that there's some, you know, you, you had, you had your friends call people to see if they'll support this for the, but have you talked to E D A Q about putting them dogs up there before you ordered something? And I used to always tell you, it isn't.
It's not at the exact precise spot of the landfill. It's a different place, um, it's, I think, probably a better place than the, um, um, the other folks out there, too, has access to water, uh, which is important. And it's, um, away from residents. And the issue, um, is it's a deposit. Uh, I guess if, um, I think it's, it's an emergency. I think our animal situation in this town is a human problem because they attacked human beings. And, uh, it's a health issue, and it's gotten out of control. And I think that it's our responsibility as a city, according to state law and our own law that we passed before, to be responsible and to be held accountable for taking care of the problem. So yeah, I made a deposit on the structure so that we would get it eventually, and it's taken months and months. And, um, I couldn't really predict when it would get here. Um, it took longer than, than even estimated. Um, so I guess technically, we'd lose the deposit. Um, but that's, that's where it did to approve it, and the answer to your question is that I asked you to make a motion to approve it.
I moved, we table all the other items on the agenda, and then I moved with yours.
Miss, Miss Franklin's.
No, I didn't.
Franklin's got a motion.
They were all items until the next meeting.
Mr. Franklin just made a motion on the table, table, uh, the rest of the agenda into adjourned. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Yeah, there you go. Let's go. It's eighty-five minutes. We gotta go.
Uh, I'll ask you, is there, is there a second? Motion does flag a second. All right, so the, so the, there's no motion or second on the animal containment.
So what is we gonna, how do we proceed for? Because it's like, you know, you say it one night that, uh, doesn't make a difference if we voted on it or not because you gonna write the check.
That was because we were in a water emergency, and I didn't attend, I was observing my spending limit. And it was normally, but in the, in an emergency, they declared emergency, it was not, as long as it was under twenty-five or maybe thirty-two, depending on. Um, and so, and so Mr. Valley recommended that, and, and others that, as a matter of process, that we go ahead and approve the, I believe it was, I was at the meeting, I was under, understood Mr. Valley, and Ms. Ramsey recommended that we go ahead and prove the ordinance. But mom wasn't at that meeting in order to that. The reason we went ahead with it is because we were in a water emergency.
No, but then when we came back to the meeting to discuss that, you said that Mr. Valley told me to ask us to clean it, and then Mr. Val had acknowledged that. And then that's when you made, I said, so if, if it's already been done, this was my statement to you. If it's already been done, why are we doing this? And your statement to me was that Mr. Val recommended that we do it to clean, clean up the purchase, meaning the and I turned my head and you said, well, it really doesn't make a difference because I'm gonna still write the check.
Yeah, because we were in a water emergency, and Mr. Val, I mean, I've known that at the time, that's what I told, I wasn't at the meeting. An ordinance was drafted, Mr. Valley usually drafts the ordinances, so I'm, so I was assuming he was involved in it, he was at the meeting already in minutes. But, um, uh, it's just nothing wrong with that. It's just that I didn't make the meeting, and I didn't remind you that we were in a water emergency. And that's all I was trying to do. And, and especially erupted about whether or not we really were, and we sent out proof that it stayed, it demonstrated that yes, we were uh, in a water emergency, and therefore it was legal. And I would also remind the council that we've had two audits, um, since I've been mayor, and not one time have I been called on any kind of, uh, uh, a problem of mayor. So we do, do pay a strong attention to it, but when we have emergencies, and I would say we've had several water emergencies, and I would also, we're now in an animal control emergency because we have, we have, I haven't declared it, but we are in an American, animal control. I made a deposit.
It's been a month. Okay, let me ask Mr. Val, since he doesn't talk.
Okay.
Mr. Val, if he made a deposit on something, does it, now say that he planned to purchase, if I put a deposit on the car?
The constitution says, it, when it talks about it specifically, it says you cannot create an, uh, any debts or evidence of any indebtedness. Uh, the first question was appropriate, and second question was you comply with the resolution. Once you start the process, you have created an obligation to, to pay it. Uh, once you put it down, that's paid in the full payment. Uh, the, the issue, the, the issue that I had probably discussed at the time, I've slept since then, was the council had two choices, either you could reject it or go ahead and plead the process. And that's what I'd said to you all at, at, at that point. Now, as relates to emergencies, I've sent you all two or three emails on emergencies, and when the mayor has authority to declare emergency, when he's not have authority to declare emergency, uh, relating to expenditures. Uh, and those emails speak for themselves. But to this particular purpose, purchase, we're now at a crossroads. The city council has not approved it. The mayor is aware the city council has not approved it. And the mayor has chosen to go ahead and spend the money in spite of the lack of council approval. And at this point, the third party has a cause of action. If we don't pay it, uh, against someone, the city's defense would be, it's not appropriated. Uh, but at this point, the kennel's on the ground, uh, at the landfill, as he paid some payment. And so what he's asking the council to do is to take it further to prove it. But it's not approved at this time. I don't, I don't know if it's appropriated. I don't think it's approved. Uh, you have to ask Ms. Rams, excuse me, or must have turned it whether it's been appropriated.
The only, the only thing I would use is the terminology, deposit is different than down payment. Um, but the, the, so I, I would, I would say that we had to make worse deposit to get it in, in because of these time, there's something that's in the national news and everybody knows about. It takes many, many months in order to get some of these things. We can't wait. We've already waited too long on the animal control issue. My real question to you is, what do you want to do about it? Your constituents, my constituents, all have a problem with it. We all know we have a problem with it. What do y'all want to do about it?
Well, my, my question is, to go back to the question, who's gonna operate this? We can't just put the kennels out there. Nobody's to operate them, nobody that's obligated because then we're gonna be just like the, uh, Humane Society. Somebody gonna be coming to pick dogs, dogs and cats or saying that we're down to male nutrition because there's nobody to feed them. I, I believe we had a lengthy discussion about this, that you were actually putting the cart before the horse when Ms. Forrest said that we needed to know how it's gonna be ran, who's gonna feed them, all of this, before we obligated money to buy. Something else just sit out there.
So ask those questions then. What, what, ask those questions again that you need answers to.
Who's gonna run the kennel? Who's gonna be, be responsible for the, the picking up of the dogs and the, the caretaking of the dogs? Are the people who are trying to run the landfill gonna be responsible for the dog kennel also?
So the answer to that question is that, like many years, it's located at the landfill until a more places chosen by the council. Uh, one reason is because it's behind, same reason it was there before. Going back to the administration, in, and longer than that, is because it's behind fenced, it's, um, all the time, and yes, the landfill personnel will be responsible, making sure that the animals are adequately watered and fed and supervised, is your question.
So will they be compensated for this?
Well, they, they are.
Extra duties.
They are being compensated now, and that is gonna be, and is part of their duties. And it has been in the past at the landfill. So that is not, that is not, that is not a new question. However, a question that you posed is in the budget that I submitted is for more money appropriated for the animal control programs that we can get to additional positions. Uh, we do need more than that. We need two additional positions, twenty-four seven. We need a containment system on a truck. We need several other items in our animal control division, but none of that matters if we don't have a place to take them. But this, the straight answer to your question is, yes, we have people who will and are, uh, responsible or will be responsible for uh, supervising the animals, making sure they're adequate, heard, humanely treated, and that we're able to comply with the law uh, that was both been approved by the city previously and by the state.
So these people have already been hired?
The existing personnel are gonna be tasked.
Do they know that they, uh?
Yes. I met with them last week about it. But we do need additional personnel, and that request is in my budget, which we're about to talk about twenty-two, and we can have that discussion some more. We need more than what we have. But in the meantime, is it adequate to maintain humane conditions for those animals we do have and to comply with the law? Yes.
As, as, as a, as a strictly legal matter, we continue to keep putting the heart, the cart before the horse. The practical issue with this is until the council's asking the mayor, but that's backwards. Uh, the mayor should be asking the council for permission to have this budgeted and create a line item for it instead of creating the line item himself and anticipating the council adopting it. And, and, and the way this is going, this is, this is backwards. Uh, just as, uh, Ms. Lee has already described, that the mayor didn't have to spend money until, if it's appropriated. The flip side is true as well. The mayor cannot spend a penny that is not previously appropriated. And while you have not been cited.
Mr. Val, before you continue, this money has been appropriated. It's in the twenty-one budget. We haven't spent all of the animal control budget.
But wait, I hadn't finished.
So it has been appropriated.
But the thing about it is, you're saying, she asked you about all the personnel.
Yeah.
And that part hadn't been appropriated. When you bind a cage and do this, you anticipate people being there and other people being there. There's, there's other things that have not been appropriated, is what I was saying. The other thing I was saying is, we continue to create these contracts with people that are above the five thousand dollar. While, while the auditors are not writing you up for it, we've had time and time and time again where we've discussed the same issue. And, uh, it's one of those things that it compels the council to be in this position. Now, if you're gonna recognize your authority to not pay as you did in the pandemic, you also need to recognize your lack of authority when it comes to the restrictions the council puts on you. We can't have it both ways. We can't all be one way for the mayor and not recognize what the council has. And so we go through these arguments. We spend every council meeting discussing serial contracts and et cetera, et cetera, and it gets into a point of, of being ridiculous. Uh, this whole scenario, you've said yourself, the city council did not appropriate it, but you ordered it anyway. You said that it's not a, it is not a order, it's just a deposit. But in making a deposit, you made a deposit for the express purpose of acquiring the, the materials to be here, the cages. Elsewise, you wouldn't have had them. And so the third party is saying that you've made a purchase and you're gonna go through it because you, because we delivered to you because the same restrictions, the same lack of availability to enough is, is, is present as well. So by you laying the deposit, you've made, you've made a security that we're going to go through with the purchase and that we're gonna place the property here, and we're gonna acquire it so a third party would not. And while you may not see it that way, you have spent ten thousand dollars, though you're saying, well, I've only spent of the down deposit. No, you spent the entire ten thousand because the third party said I could have sold it, sold it to a third party. And you've paid this down in anticipation of you receiving it, and you have received it. And now their position is going to be me. And at this point, you have two options, either pay them or get sued. You can try to return it and get the refund and several, but it's clear that you had zero authority by the council. I don't know why you went through it. There's no legal authority to create an emergency for dogs. Just the statute is clear. There's no legal authority in to create an emergency for water. I've sent the emails two or three times to you. The emails that the mayor, the, the emergencies the mayor have are subsidiary to the, uh, to the, the emergency declared by governor. They typically deal with natural disasters. They typically deal with when the military is called up. They typically deal with those type of things and not just something that's a perceived emergency. Now, the balanced city council, as it relates to the water, the mayor has one thing absolutely right about water. It is a public utility, and the city council cannot stick their hands in the sand when he says, hey, I have this problem with the water company. Those things should take priority. However, the mayor should communicate those same regulations instead of just declaring emergencies and going through it. He just come through the front door and said, listen, public utility, that I have to provide, uh, water to the citizen of Helena, West Helena, and those who are on the, the water company. I need you all to act, here's the issue, and go forward. The man just come through the front door and then started.
Mr. Valley, Mr. Valley, I scheduled a special call meeting. We didn't have a call.
You scheduled a special call meeting. Mayor, don't interrupt me. I was talking. Don't interrupt me.
Now, point of.
Don't interrupt me.
You just. I sent the email out the next day to demonstrate that's what happened. It's misleading to indicate that I did not come from the front door, and that's exactly what I did.
Let's pause for a second. You're saying you called special call meeting for the record. The two special call meetings you've called regarding the water have been at three o'clock in the afternoon, but you know everybody in this body is at work. Stop being disingenuous about that and stop telling me that I'm being false about what I'm saying. Madam Clerk, were those meetings at three o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. And so, were all y'all at, at work at, there's something you would say, Columbia? The three o'clock meeting, the mayor called, all of you were at work, right? Okay, and so you called a meeting at a time when you know you weren't gonna have a call to fame that the city council is not working with you. Let us be clear about what happened there. And the thing about it is, while you're trying, I'm being disingenuous, all I'm saying to you is this. The two of you all, the mayor and the council, have to work together. The council, you all have to recognize when he's had issues with the water, that he needs to follow me and he's to call at a time when you all could be available for you all to discuss it. I've said for years that I think that the spending authority of the mayor is too low, but it's been that way since consolidation, okay? Now, as it relates to the water, the city council needs to do something about the water. But the mayor has to come through at a regular meet and describe, here's the issue, here's the next issue, here's the next issue, here's the next issue. As relates to this expenditure, it is clear that the mayor did not receive council approval from the council. And he said that he's gonna do, he could spend the money how he wants to spend it, he spent it. And that's, that's what he's done.
I, I didn't say that, I said, what I said was I put a deposit on it so he gave order, hoping that council would approve it.
Said if they didn't approve it, you're gonna spend it, that's what you did.
I didn't say that, are you talking about the water or what are you talking about?
Talking about the sanitation. I'm talking about these dogs.
The animal, I didn't say that I was gonna spend it no matter what you did. I put a deposit, it's a, it's a, an unrefundable deposit. And my, we, we, and, 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 and with all due respect to all of these personal motivations that people are ascribing to me without asking me. I've also remember this council saying that we can meet on the street corner if we needed, we just need to have a meeting every day if we can. And, and we're officials, also have a business, it's not convenient at three o'clock or any other time for this matter. It's, it's late now, we're all here because we chose to be. And all I'm trying to tell you is really simple, we have a serious problem with animal control in our city. Because, because of the lack of a place to put animals, we cannot ethically enforce the law approved by this council and by the state. In order to enforce that law, we need a place to put them. We're putting them back where it was before, under the Valley administration in a humane way with oversight and sustainability with water and food. And after what I've been through, I'm not gonna let that fall through. But we do have an animal crisis on our streets, we all know that. I'm asking you to approve this so that we can do something or at least begin to do something about it. It is in the, in the budget and it's also in the proposed budget for twenty two. And flash out even more with personnel issues, but we can do this and I'm asking you to do it, it's that simple.
Francis is not here, but I don't think we approved anything for dollars in this budget.
Twenty five thousand dollar preparation in twenty twenty one budget, Mr. Frank.
I, I understand, I don't. What, can I say this, why does when, when I have something to say, you get so aggressive? I've told you a minute, if you stop being an angry kid, just grabbing all his toys and wanna go home, and see unless somebody have a cut.
What I'm angry about is the refusal and the obstruction to solve the city's problems, we have an animal control problem. Need your help to resolve it, I'm asking you to help resolve it and all I hear.
Cause you already purchased, so don't try, like I said before, don't try to flip the switch like it's us. It's not us, cause we did not go out and purchase ten thousand dollar, uh, dog shelter that has not been approved. You don't know who gonna run it, you don't know where you gonna.
Yes, I do, I just answered those questions.
You don't know where the water gonna come from.
I just answered all those questions. Were you not listening to me? I just answered your question.
You don't wanna listen, so.
It's not me that won't listen, I answered your questions. You aren't listening to the answers because they weren't the answers you wanted to hear. I'm asking you to help.
Listen, I'm asking you to listen, I'm saying this, so are you saying that A D E Q says that these people can operate the landfill and a dog shelter at the same time?
Yes.
You got that right.
Civil engineer.
Do you have it in writing, that's all I'm asking.
I have a text message from a civil engineer and I met with him last week. I'll try, I'll see if I can, it, and I'm telling you for the record, ask him yourself tomorrow. You don't have to do it at a meeting on the radio and on Zoom, call him, he works for the city, his name is Philip Fields. But now you're asking.
You did not tell us that you had already those things.
You are doubting.
We found out that they have been ordered because they were being delivered. You never said anything to us when you came to us or advertised properties to ask us to approve this. You never told us that you had already made a down payment, so make it clear, don't try making something like.
I've told you several times.
You have never told us that you made a down payment on anything.
I told you tonight, I made a deposit, I didn't know it was gonna be delivered today.
Hey, but you should have told us.
I didn't know when it would be delivered.
Not when they're delivered. You should have said, I'm making a, tried to make a deposit on these kennels so that they can be delivered. Don't make a deposit and then when they're delivered, it comes out that you've already spent the money. So don't try, don't try to flip the switch on me.
Point of water.
Mr. Valley.
I just, it's eight fifteen, I have a couple things I need to get done tonight for, for, for tomorrow. And I was just saying, do you all desire to resolve any of these issues? I'm willing to stay if you desire to resolve them, but if you're not ready to solve them, let's go into next week. He's asking about the dogs kennels, if you're gonna resolve it, you have authority to any time to ratify the mayor's actions. If you wanna do it, you can do it, if you don't wanna do it, then say so, but, but.
But, but, Mr. Valley, my question is, city attorney, by what you said, because I had a deposit, am I now obligated to make payment?
I think as a practical matter, I'd have to talk to the person whether they're taking back, I think you made a deposit to preserve it. They probably think you are, unless they are willing to accept it back.
Would you answer that question for me tomorrow then?
I'd have to, I'd have to talk to the person, who, who, individual.
I'll get it, I'll get that for you.
Cause I don't know if they, they're willing to, to, to accept it back, but that's, that's the practical problem of where we are at this point.
Okay, I'll get that contact for you if you will. Now, y'all have extended the budget. If you will give me the legal guidance on it tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Well.
Any other, Mr. Valley, did you have anything else? All right, we passed our eight o'clock hour, Mr. Mr. Evelyn, did you wanna say something?
I only one issue, complaint from a citizen regarding four wheelers on DeVilla, DeSoto and Russell at high rate of speed and warning, basically if you could get in contact with the chief and ask if they could increase patrols in that area. Reported the people riding four wheelers at high races speed and their kids in the area. I did tell that person who called me last night that I would make mention of that at this meeting, so if you would notify the.
Yes, sir, and I will, I will do that, I will notify the chief police about your concerns that you raised tonight.
Yes, sir, and just, just a comment, that, that, the irony. So I've been on this council since consolidation of the people who closed down animal control coming back and asked that animal control be reconstituted at the same location that it was closed down, it's just baffling to me. Uh, we've come full circle, we've come full circle on animal control.
Well, let me be clear that, that it's my decision to put it there, I had nothing to do with what happened, the Valley administration closed it when it was out there before, I'm not even sure, I had nothing to do with it. It's my decision for the same reasons, the questions that you had tonight, it has water, it has supervision, it's behind the fence. We have to obey the law. The law says that we have to do certain things that we're not doing because we have no place to put them. As far as the past, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I just know that right now we have a problem and it's our job to solve it.
I, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just pointing out the fact that.
It is ironic, I agree with you, but I was not involved in that.
People who went down and shut it down now want us to reconstitute, I, I can't get past it, it's so ironic to me.
And I wasn't, I wasn't there and I don't disagree with you, but I was not me, I'm asking you.
I've never been an advocate of housing, I think there's a lot of different ways to address this issue, I've never been an advocate for housing. And so that's why I don't jump in and support this, I think there's more than one way skinhead is to. And I think that one of the biggest problems that I see it over the years is sit here at this table and say, because I wasn't afraid to say it, is that we should have never married ourselves to the humane society. Of animal control, city function, not some private organization's function, but here we are, we've come all the way back to point one.
Well, and I agree with you too, since I've been mayor and it's been in my budget since I've been mayor. As far as the housing issue, that is our ordinance, that is the law on the books and that's state law. And I'm interested in your ideas on that, I'm not an expert, but I do know that we're required by law to do certain things, which includes housing them and we do not have a facility. And that's all this is designed to address, it's not personal, to use that word that was used, it's not anything, I'm not wagging fingers at anybody. I'm just asking y'all to help me, help our community with this out of control animal prob- problem. This is only a beginning, we have a bigger conversation about that in the twenty two budget, but this is an important beginning. And that's.
I talked to someone today, someone contacted me about them and I would like to share with you, we were talking about looking at other uh, animal shelters run by cities, things like Marianna, getting information that say, doing that before a middle or anything.
I, I can tell you the Marianna is not run by the city, it's run by a humane society.
I didn't say it was run by the city.
You just, you just said it was.
I did not say that, and I did, I said, we said we were going to look at other cities such as Marianna as shelters and how they were set up and how they were run.
By the cities and it's not run by the cities. Well, we're all tired.
No, I, I, I don't like that, I didn't say that, I didn't say it was run by the city, I don't know.
All right, Ms. Forrest, I stand corrected, I stand corrected and I apologize if I spoke out.
It's, it's my experience to me that you said that we're fighting for the city, but you've been asking Madam Clerk all night long what time it is. My personal opinion to this is, if you saying that you wanna call special call meetings, you wanna call a special call meeting for certain things, but you don't wanna stay at the meeting itself to discuss stuff that's prospered the city forward. You've been asking her since seven fifteen, what time it is.
That's because I don't have a wristwatch and I don't have my cell phone.
I'm saying, it, it should make a difference that at eight o'clock if we're trying to do something.
Miss, Miss, Miss Clark, we, we were here. We were here till, what, past nine o'clock, the last meeting. And last regular meeting that we had. And I'm willing to say, I've said that several times, but y'all have also said and Mr. St. Columbia, if I'm not mistaken, the council asked to set eight o'clock as a time limit. Before I became, before I became mayor, I'm trying to respect your time as well.
Not my time.
And the only reason I've been asking that is because I don't have a wristwatch or a phone on me. And Mr. Turner is not here, so I haven't been able to act. I think the personal attacks. Everybody's time, including the public.
Look, you're attacking us when you pay no attention, you, it doesn't matter to you what we say. We have discussed this animal shelter for three or four weeks, but not one time did you say, well, I already made a deposit on it, so we need to move forward. The only reason we know today that you made a deposit, because they were delivered. If you had have told us when you first started discussing this, well, we've already made a deposit, so we need to try to figure out what we're gonna do. You don't communicate with us, the public comes to tell the council what the council should be telling the public. But don't try to make it seem like it's a personal attack, it's just that.
It's personal.
Yeah, with you, with you, yes, yes.
The issue of the deposit.
You have said numerous times that you are the CEO of this city and you're gonna flex your muscles, basically, it's what you're saying, that I'm gonna do what I wanna do, cause I'm the CEO and they do what I said do, not what's right.
And that, you don't think, you don't think what you're saying right now is a personal attack? You don't think what you just said is a personal attack? But you don't see it as a personal attack?
I'm just repeating what you say.
Any other business to come for the council, is there a motion to adjourn, Mr. St. Columbia, is there a second?